With our team, so we went lots in there. We had the Little Peaky Stadium and then...
Hey, I'd like to bring the Rondo Planning Board to order. Tonight on the agenda, we have approval of minutes of October 10. We have a public hearing for Kimball gravel pit renewal conditional use permit, application Kimball gravel pit renewal, and Dubois auto salvage conditional use renewal. Proposed... What do we sign bylaws for?
Stuff you haven't signed in a while.
Okay. And then we have proposed revisions to land use ordinances, land use report, other business and public comments. Do we have to have a roll call? Yeah.
All right, Gary.
James Lowey.
Tom McGinn.
Bob.
Rod Moore.
John Durk.
Rich Goodon.
Ted Nambro.
Ann Tarr.
Okay. Gonna move this meeting along. Minutes. Everybody have a chance to read the minutes of October 10.
Make motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Correct.
Our motions were made in second. All in favor? All opposed?
I am.
All in staying. Okay, I am two. I am one, actually. Kimball gravel pit. Anyone here for the public hearing? Like open public hearing.
I'm Chip Lake, Sergeant Corporation. So, any of the application?
Representing the applicant.
Representing the applicant? Thank you.
Don't worry, you have no members of the public here. It's supposed to be public hearing. Now you can tell us about the renewal. Look for renewal.
Looking for renewal conditional use. We've noted every year, every three years for the last since 1991. No significant changes to the site since the last renewal. I have the site plan that I've updated. The owner is potentially considering breaking out one law, which I've identified here and noted on the plan. Other than that, it's identical to the previous plan.
Ted, you have any comments?
No.
I haven't seen the broken lock in.
Well, you said potentially, so that...
Potential. And you shouldn't affect this application by just wanting to put it out there so that...
Any comments, Ted? I think some of the board members were already on the site. We sort of agree with the applicant. There's nothing to be done out there.
Quick question. What's the approximate open area of the expiration?
The DDP measured at about four acres. Permitted area is five.
Then you should have a copy of the DDP inspection report. They do that on a biannual basis. Usually come out and do the, make sure the buffers are correct and meet state standards.
Do they get there that often?
Well, no, it's only a couple of people that have... Two people. Mike Stebbins and Christina Stacy. They're very good. Max is meeting Christina next week. Next goes the two guys.
She probably says all at once.
Southern Aime. Mike goes all at once.
No other issues? Any comments from the board? The motions? All in favor? Yeah. Opposed? Motion moves?
I was in favor. Yeah. We need to kind of go through...
Right?
You want any readers?
Yeah, go ahead.
"Pound of Rondo Law Conditional Use Permit for Sergeant Gravel Pit, whereas on September 26, 2013, the Rondo Planning Board received a conditional use application renewal for Sergeant Corporation for a proposed conditional use permit for an existing four-acre mineral extraction operation located at 346 Thompson Road, tax map 20, lot 7, in the R4 district. Whereas on October 5, 2013, the Rondo Planning Board conducted a site walk up to the proposed activity project site. Whereas on October 24, 2013, the Rondo Planning Board conducted a public hearing on the proposed removal. Findings of fact: The owner of the property is John Indiana Kimball. Two, the applicant is the Sergeant Corporation. Three, the property is located on the Alfred Road and is identified as a Rondo assessment map 20, lot 7 and 8, and map 7, lot 3. Four, the property is approximately 78 acres in size with approximately 560 feet of frontage on the Alfred Road and is located in the R4 zoning district. Five, in 1991, the applicant received approval for a mineral extraction operation on the premises. Approval has been renewed periodically since that time. Six, the area approved for extraction is approximately 45 acres in area. Only about 38 acres have been expedited to date. Seven, the applicant has submitted a site grading plan prepared by Sergeant Corporation dated 8/22/07 with revisions through 6/10/10 showing recent regrading and excavation areas. Eight, applicant maintains assuredty bond for $50,000 for reclamation of the pit. Conclusions: One, 97H1, that the use is compatible with and similar to the general categories of uses of neighboring property. The planning board finds that the existing use and proposed expansion is a permitted conditional use in the district and is compatible with other similar uses in the R4 district."
Can we vote for these all at once? So how does the, I have the motion that...
Point seven is what?
Yes. Some will... Second. All in favor? Before we have discussion, I have no problems with this, but sometimes when a computer's compatible with and similar to general categories of neighboring properties, when this is the only one, how similar is it? So it's a word similar that I have an issue with.
It's with other uses within the R4, not necessarily right next door.
Don't say like...
Yeah. Last part didn't say...
Maybe it's the italic that... But that's all I need to say. Move on to...
All in favor.
Anybody? Party voting.
Two, 97H2, the use is consistent with comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood. The planning board finds that mineral extraction uses are permitted uses in the rural conservation district as outlined in the comprehensive plan. And therefore, the use is in fact in performance with the 2000 and southern country.
Group two accept? Second. All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Three, 97H3, that there is adequate and safe pedestrian vehicular access into and into the site to accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the use. The planning board finds that the application is in performance with the criteria of section 97H3 and that the site is remote, no foot traffic, and very little vehicle traffic. The MDOT traffic movement permit is enforced, and there is a paved apron at the entrance to protect the integrity of the lead. 111, the gravel pit.
Motion? Group two accept? Second. Any discussion?
Any discussion? Change of group 11 to 11.
Question for the applicant. When does your, does your traffic movement permit have an expiration date?
Not that I'm aware of. No, we, every time we set up, we put up truck centering signs. As we're on both sides. That's because of our normal safety policy also.
No further discussion? I'll vote on a proposal? No. Any opposed? So move.
Or 97H4, that there is adequate water supply and sewage disposable available to the service of use. The planning board has found that the application meets the criteria of section 97H4 and that the use does not require an onsite water supply or sewage disposal system and therefore has no impact upon these environmental concerns.
Any discussion? I'll make a motion. No, we have discussion on it.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm in favor of it.
All in favor? Any opposed? So move.
97H5, that there will be no noise, dust, odor, vibrations generated by the use that will adversely affect neighboring properties. The planning board has found that the application meets the criteria of section 97H5 and that there has been very little excavation performed on the site and code enforcement office has not reported any citizen complaints in the past three years.
Group two accept? Second. Any discussion? No discussion, motion, all in favor? Any opposed? So move.
Six, 97H6, that physical characteristics of the site, including location, slope, water drainage, and vegetative cover are suitable for the proposed use. The planning board has found that the application meets the criteria of section 97H6 and that slopes are improved. That the original plan and all drainage used diverted into the area. All standards in section 97H6 are met.
Group two accept? Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So move.
Seven, 97H7, that the use does not constitute a public or private inducence. The planning board has found that the application meets the criteria of 97H7 and the code enforcement office has not reported any citizen complaints in the past three years.
Group two accept? Second. Any discussion, motion? Very none? All in favor? Any opposed? So move.
Eight, 97H8, that all other requirements applicable provisions of this ordinance, particularly interim performance standards, are met. The planning board has found that the application meets the criteria of section 97H8 and that all submissions by the applicant are in compliance with and meet the performance standards.
Group two accept? Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, Rich.
Do you have a comment, Rich?
No, no.
Tom and I would both agree the second.
No discussion? How many voted in motion? All in favor? Any opposed? So pass.
Decision based on the above facts and conclusions, the Rondo Planning Board approves the renewal of the conditional use permit for Sergeant Corporation to continue operation on a five-acre mineral extraction operation located at 346 Thompson Road, tax map 20, lot 7, in the R4 district. Contingent found the following conditions: One, the fueling area liner will be replaced prior to the resumption of extraction operations on the site. Two, hours of operation will be limited to Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Three, the applicant shall maintain the $50,000 surety bond naming the town of Rondo as the insurer for the period of this permit. And four, this permit shall expire on October 24, 2016. So approved by the Rondo Planning Board by vote at this point of date about October 24, 2013.
No one? Any motion of finding this a fact?
Question.
Yes.
Operations turn out, as we've had before in town, turn out that during daylight outage. And many times, it was beyond 6:00.
Yep, but this is the exact same specifications you had in your last...
Okay, I'm just asking for clarity. That's what I'm asking.
And from memory, this is what Sergeant Corporation invited for...
That's what we submitted. I mean, I'll do that at the time that was the ordinance.
Okay, I'm just thinking...
Yeah, if there's any difference, we can communicate with the buffer authorities.
Hey, have a motion of finding this a fact? Two. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Yeah. Any opposed? My law sign your time.
Are there a...
My law and two cricket clubs.
We have my law hand.
Those times will work out. Mike, please sign all. I was gonna say, I think those times will work out with the neighbors. You do the... I don't know about that panel.
You can write.
Say two milos?
Should be one my law and two paper dollars. That runs out, I've got this. Sign with this. All right. He says he does that.
Are you ready for this? Yeah, I've been watching the sign.
Take the copies and send them to them.
I know by the way since you can't enforce it, even if you impose the tax on it, you go to jail.
What is that you're for?
Uh, 24. 24.
Use your pen. It's in the bottom. And according to points, it's time, so this is gonna be like the Declaration of Independence. Take back the shot tomorrow and prove that you're here.
Oh, yeah, they know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
He'll pass this back.
To some operations assistant.
I hope so.
He'll send me the copy of the order.
Email by...
Okay. You don't mind a PDF on it?
No.
Okay. Send your PDF on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Been trying.
See you in a couple years.
Great, three years. Talk soon, man.
Well, unless you're picking rocks. I admire the fact that two boards are here.
They're not coming. What?
They said they weren't gonna be here tonight. They come last.
Mr. Chairman, in light of the fact that they're not here, I'm moving tables until they show up because that's what we've done in the past with applicants that don't show up. We table.
I second that.
All in favor? No discussion? Yeah, I'm sorry, could have had discussion.
I think it's been our standard procedure in the past that if the applicant doesn't show up, we table the process. And I think we should.
What was the reason they gave you? That was what they told me. If they told you something differently than what they told me.
Because I said, Steve, tonight they saw...
Which is different than what was communicated to us at the site.
Yeah, they said they would be here.
Yeah, they said they were gonna be here. The only thought on that is, because we can't really discuss anything without them being here. So on that basis, they're not here, we can't very well...
No, but the alternative of what I think Roger said was, let's just take things out of order to the end of the meeting and if they don't show, if they don't play, it can be ugly.
Well, Rich has simply tabled this, so we can...
If they show up, we can take it off the table. They gotta show up.
So let me take this opportunity to sign this one.
We have a motion, second.
We have to vote on that motion.
We have a motion to table the application from Dubois Auto Salvage Yard. And a second.
I'll second.
No, I'm second. Sorry, second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Let the record show that I'm abstaining from discussion and vote because I'm in a better...
So they table.
Does they show up?
If they show up, we can take it off the table and discuss it.
Yeah, I mean, that's... Can you tell them what they're signing?
You have the what?
That I do wish.
Ted, what are they signing then?
Do we need a public hearing for that?
We have a decision. I think as...
This is for...
Chairman, I think we should do.
Why can't you start with the sign?
I'm not. I don't know.
Would we need to have official public hearings for Dubois Salvage?
Absolutely.
I don't need that. Just the ones that were assigned to Sergeant's orders. They have that standing.
Oh, actually, absolutely.
Yeah.
That's what I'm wondering.
So why don't we schedule the public hearing then? And then they have to know that one is...
Is there anything you wanted to discuss about them?
Well, we can't without them here.
Okay, fine.
We haven't discussed them.
No, we haven't asked. So we couldn't even deal with Sergeant. Yeah, we've discussed. But you can schedule a public hearing. You want to schedule a public hearing, you can.
You haven't been able to speak on the House of the Act.
You can schedule a public hearing anyways, Ted.
Yeah, but in order to schedule a public hearing, they have to be here anyway. If you have questions.
Of what concern?
They may be here for a public hearing.
Oh, right. You can make those come into the public hearing. They don't have to act the same night as a public hearing. Ted's just playing for dust. Not all playing for students. It's playing with my, oh, Abi to act that same night. Thirty days after that public hearing.
Yeah, right. You have thirty days. Usually, yeah, discussions. If there's some major concern, then we wait, get them resolved before we...
So I'd like to make motion that we schedule the... Again, I'm just trying to say God time. We don't have to do this all again. So I'd like to schedule all people a public hearing for our next...
I'll second Ted.
A motion, Roger, and a second. Schedule a public...
He's in, he's in train, Rich, there's two occasions. Things are... Going one sidewalk, isn't it?
Yeah, there's only one block. Okay. That'll be the...
November 14.
November 14 will be our first meeting.
Which would be good, because we have a meeting on the... What, this is on... So they thought, do you sneak this in here, Ted? The season chart is? Yeah, I wanted to sneak to see you guys, because we have...
We're forbidden. We're all by my law time.
No, I didn't, but Will showed me. What's Sean Frank doing? We're not gonna have 198?
What is that, Ted? So more pipe?
No, it's, it's...
It's Karen.
Tell Mr. Chairman, they've done this before.
Oh, so they're...
Number eight? Is that it? Remember eight, we have a workshop.
The first meeting, the planning board, is November 14. Whether you're doing a workshop with another board on a different date, your regular meeting is 14th of November.
I was looking at one day.
Okay, so is that?
Sorry, the 14th?
But we have to...
I don't know. I haven't heard about it.
I didn't know.
You guys focus. Will you guys focus?
I didn't know about this either.
So there's a motion on the table.
And a second.
And the second. Hold the second one.
Motion to schedule a public hearing for November 14. Chair, that will be a board here, but come on.
He needs a gavel.
That's our, that's our first meeting of November.
This works right. When I raise attention. There's a motion on the floor and a second for all the public hearing on one date. November 14. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
I do want to stay together.
Thank you, Tom.
Norwood stands, I'm happy, ladies. He had one from the other. No, it wasn't the governor, it was Senator.
Question. I don't think we want to have any conflict of interest usually.
On this is... I didn't get the names.
I ask a question. Yeah. You shouldn't sign it. Because there will be conflict of interest, you can order to fire.
Neither one.
How many at Rondo Historic Society?
No, I don't think so. Where's the conflict?
You're in property.
Yeah.
Any more?
Don't you sign transfer?
No, definitely.
It's a property.
It's a plan.
That's why I'm just asking, just like I'm listening.
Don't worry, I'll blot him out.
Huh? I'll blot him out.
I don't know why Will gave me something. If you want to sign the...
Can we drop that down?
At least just for our purposes. No, I sent one, I have one goes to Sebagel, one goes to the Historic Society, one goes in file, and one's extra. and one's extra, guys.
Hey, Ted?
Yes, sir.
The application have to be determined as complete before you hold a public hearing?
Would you call the application? I hasn't yet.
Yeah, but I don't have access to essentially, sort of...
We missed somebody on this page. That was the last, bottom line of...
I noticed one that's a little... I thought we determined it complete, did schedule the second.
Now, you determined the motion at the last meeting for DuBois was...
Second.
Now, Mr. Kane moved to accept the application for consideration by the board, does not quote-unquote "beings" complete, and then you did schedule the sidewalk, so that's the two motions that we made for DuBois at the last meeting.
Ted, so we can't schedule it?
You're very nice.
No, I would draw my second.
Or I had to vote, we have to do reconsider.
So, I need a motion to cancel the public hearing.
To reconsider the motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we reconsider the public hearing for DuBois scheduled for November 14th.
Question.
We'll have a discussion.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, so now we can have a discussion.
Okay, question. Can we deem the application as complete?
We can't act on the application, the applicant's not here tonight.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I think it's only if you have questions that they can answer.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know if it's in the code there. I don't know, I don't know.
Mr. Plank?
No, there's nothing about the applicant that tells me they're all times. It's a policy that you follow.
Yeah, it just makes good...
I don't believe I have the...
It doesn't say it black, white, and they have to be here. Like Ted's saying.
Yeah.
It doesn't say it, it's rule of thumb.
But...
And you've got it, you've got that in my office.
But the application had to be completely come before us to begin.
No, no.
No.
We didn't accept it as a complete application.
We had to try to reconsider it because it was late.
Yes, we made that determination.
Correct.
And then we made this determination and have the sidewalk.
Well, all right, let me ask you this question then. If we accepted it as being late, was it a completed application?
Oh, it can be late but not complete.
Your motion was just to accept it.
I know, I know, I'm just...
But that's what we get, we accepted it for consideration and that they... That's everybody, and should have been...
It should have been that. It should have been complete last meeting.
No, it was just... It's one of the applicants.
Well, I think it should have been determined to be complete before we ever scheduled the sidewalk.
Correct, that's my...
That's the point.
Because we're always saying we want the applicant, we want a complete application before we do anything, so it last week, it should have been, was it complete or not?
Yeah, and see, I might think Ted wouldn't give it to us if it was incomplete, but they didn't have something substantial.
Sure, I would have given it to you if it was not substantially complete, I would have. But you don't know until you go out on the site, you know, whether everything that you need is there. I have a plan, until we go on the site, I don't know if that plan's accurate, number one, and number two, if it answers to all our questions. If it doesn't answer all your questions, then what you do is then you ask the applicant some additional information.
But deeming an application complete only goes to have they made all of their submission requirements, not do they meet A, B, C, D, E, F. They've got a, for instance, they've got a sewage plan, they've got...
Right.
The meat bomb, they've got something that says how much, it's impervious, they've got, they've got, got, got. And then you go on the sidewalk and kind of determine.
Uh, I disagree with that. What I would say is that when the board deems it complete, means that all the information the board needs to make a reasonable decision on this is provided. It doesn't mean whether the information's correct or not correct, but I have all the information. You may go out on the site and say, I don't think, I think that's a wetland board.
I agree with that.
You know, and what we need to make this application complete is you need to go out and map that wetland or get a wetland hydrologist in here, basically tell me whether or not that's a regulated wetland. And then, when he does that, whether he says it is or it isn't, then the board says, yeah, we've got all the information, we don't want you to go through that, but we've got all the information we need, and we're going to deny it because that exists. Certainly, that's the case, but you can determine it's complete when all the information that you need to make a reasonable decision is provided. That's when you need to make a determination.
You've done sidewalks before completion, but we've never done public hearings for determining the application complete. Usually, though, at the bottom point, usually we determine that it's complete, and then we schedule a sidewalk.
Correct, correct.
And that did happen at the last meeting, it got missed.
Yeah, no, that was our article, we should have taken that next step at the last meeting, because it was kind of...
Yeah.
Rich, the chair.
But you could still determine it complete today, as long as nobody asks questions for the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, can we consider this as a complete application, since we haven't scheduled a sidewalk?
Is that a motion?
Yes.
No, point of order, we have a motion on the floor.
What's the motion?
The motion was to reconsider the public hearing. To reconsider the public hearing. So, we have to vote on that before we have another motion to vote.
Yeah, but as part of discussion, we've got...
Oh, I agree with that, but Marty was going to make a motion, and we can't do that.
Not a motion, we've got to consider something.
And if we're going to, there'd be no need to reconsider the public hearing if we deem the application complete.
But we have to vote. Before we can vote on whether the application is complete, we have to address the motion that's on the floor. So, we would have to vote to not reconsider.
But do we need to technically resend the vote on the public hearing in order to be... I know it's putting things out of order.
Yeah, I think we do, because there's a motion on the floor, so we have to address that motion before we address, before we vote on it.
Addressing motion, but Jay, what I'm hearing you ask is that, um, do we, do we have to revoke the...
I think we've got that.
And then put it back in?
No, we can...
He's got a motion, so if somebody's seconding a motion and we vote against it...
We can defeat the motion.
Ted, you've got to come up.
Point of order, ladies and gentlemen, sometimes we do this because we have two separate methodologies of addressing site plan and conditional use. In site plan processes, this board must deem the application complete.
This is a conditional use.
This is a conditional use, and this is what it says, just so you know this. And remember, one of the things the board has to do with the site plans, they have to determine an application is complete and cited as such. With a conditional use application, it says that, this is what it says on the public hearings. Within forty-five days after the receipt of a complete conditional use application for a major development, the planning board shall hold a public hearing on the proposed project. Ten days prior to the public hearing, the planning board shall publish a notice of the public hearing on the town website, the town bulletin board, and a newspaper, daily circulation in town or rural, notices of the public hearing. Uh, notices of the public hearing shall be sent to all owners of the property located in or rural situated within five hundred feet of the proposed major development project. Now, there's nothing in here that determines what determines a complete application. The only thing it says is it has a list under application decision and submission requirements of what all the requirements are that are should be on a plan, um, to make it complete. And what it does say here is waivers, the board make random waiver or modification of these standards after the submission of a written request by the applicant and the board by unanimous vote of its form, makes a plan that the waiver will not cause adverse effect to neighboring properties, waiver of modification of standard will not cause adverse effect. Um, cost of compliance with the standard is prohibitive, malicious overall size and cost of proposed use, and there's no similar uses in neighborhood which have been required to comply with the standard. The standard is a submission standard. It's not a regulatory standard, it's a submission standard. So...
And that's what you deem complete, is submission, did they submit everything?
That's all it says. They submitted, they submitted...
No, no, but that's for a ma... See, here's where we're, that's for a major development, that's for somebody brand new coming in, that's what they have to do. This is, this is a renewal. This isn't a, this one isn't a major development, this is to validate that conditions haven't changed, they have changed, and then if needed, take appropriate action and get the additional submission.
I would agree with you, although that's not what qualifies as a major development. This is a renewal application, which we don't recognize in here, by the way. We have a renewal application, if you look at your form there, it is a renewal application form that we devised. It has been for simplicity, obviously.
Yeah.
And, but the major development, this is a major development by our definition of what a major development is for conditional use. I think simply put, I mean, because a major development's anything that isn't a minor development, and a minor development is a five-hundred-square-foot building or a change of use that doesn't, no, any change from one conditional use to another that isn't significant impact, whatever that means. And then the following of wetlands, you know, killing plant.
And none of those apply in this...
Right, so this is a major development under the circumstances.
Yeah, no.
But, yeah, it is, by our definition, it is. But the point is, this is a renewal, this is a renewal of an application, this is renewal of a permit that was granted that's already gone through that level of review.
Correct.
So...
So, and I guess to my point was, all we needed to do is need the renewal submission...
Of course, we have no standards.
For the application.
Yep, the standards are...
We have an application submission for renewal. That's all they have to make in order to have their submission deemed, from my opinion, in this instance, that's all that has to be submitted, they submitted it, too. That's how we got there, then we had the question, well, can we review it? And that's what we addressed at the last meeting, we weren't sure, it's the first one we went, got the legal opinion, they said yes, we can, and we can not find that we get it.
Well, that's because they're permitted, swear. They have what they're permitted.
Yeah, so, yeah.
What you're looking for, Jamie, is nine seven. Or anybody who has your...
I don't know, page 123. You know, this is cart...
That stuff that we'll have to get through again.
Well, what I'd like to get through is Rich's motion, reconsider public hearing. Do we have a second on that? And?
I think we have a second.
Yes, you have, Mr. Plank, the reconsideration of public hearing.
So, the issue is above.
What's that?
So, the issue would be closing a further discussion and then proceeding with the vote on the motion.
Exactly, so have any further discussion?
Well, I don't know, maybe I'm confused when I look at this. It says that an applicant for a use that requires a conditional use permit shall file an application for the permit with the town planner and submit all designated application and administrative fees as determined by the board of selection for the town of Rumble.
That's all they need.
That's right.
That's all they need for renewal.
But he's got to submit all the designated...
That's the administrative stuff.
And if that's...
That's not, that's not a development.
You're right.
It's just the administrative procedure that it goes to, it goes to the town planner.
Right, and he's got that...
And he makes sure that he's got the fees, they've got the, they requested it, and then if that has been that, then it comes to the board.
So, my question to Ted would be, do they, do they meet that requirement? Have they submitted the renewal application? You've collected all the fees and everything? So, I think at that point, that that means that it's complete.
It's complete.
Right, and that means if it is complete, then we can go through with the public hearing.
That's right, right.
So, the motion on the floor, we've had enough discussion.
Is to resend them.
In my opinion, it should be voted down, because...
I agree.
Okay, so all in favor of...
Can that be...
Yeah, we can vote down his motion.
Can that be rescinded by the person who made the motion?
We could just vote it out.
Just, we could, but we could just vote it and just get it over.
After discussion.
Okay, discussion's over. How do we feel about rescheduling the public hearing? All in favor of doing that? Rescinding the public hearing? Those opposed?
Yeah.
So, can you do regulations? Can you do regulations, you ought to be clear on renewals, because you're, you're right, the renewal is kind of vague here.
What moneyed the waters? What moneyed the waters is they came in with that renewal application a little bit late.
That didn't money the water at all, in my estimation, that didn't money nothing at all. It's still a renewal.
It's a renewal, but it didn't money the water into that, we focused on that. Had we not had that issue, then we would have taken that action.
Right, exactly, that's what I'm saying.
That's all.
But just, but it, right, if it had not been expired, there's still no regulation on how to deal with the renewal.
But I'm saying the fact that it had expired postponed us, ruled over.
So, I would vote for the next issue, go.
Ted?
Yes, sir.
Can, um, we get clarification from our counsel on whether the board is required to judge an application as complete?
I think she would say yes in terms of... In terms of a site plan review.
But how about in terms of this?
I think that would be something that the planner has more authority than the board has, okay? Because the planner, the application's got to be determined that enough stuff comes to the planner to be able to send to the board.
So, he can break it to the board?
And, yeah, see, that's renewal, and that's how it was writ, and that was how it was written. The only...
There's nothing written.
There's nothing on renewal. We just read, well, renewal application...
No, no, no.
That's conditional use.
Somebody seeking a condi...
But the condition, it says, within forty-five days after receipt of a complete, complete conditional use application for major development, the planning board shall hold a public... It doesn't say who determines it as complete.
But that goes to my question...
On the site plan, it does.
But that goes to my question is, from a, from a legal entity, I'm not sure if Ted has the authority to deem it as complete.
Yes.
I don't know that he does.
The way I read it, I think the planning board determines it as complete, but that's just my guess, that's just me.
You're probably right. Because I have no authority...
Because it says the planning board, right.
I don't, I only have authority when you grant me authority.
Yeah, but you've been granted the authority to the town planner to accept it and to review it for us before it comes to us.
I have authority to review it, but I don't have the authority to make any declarations about it. But the fact, if I take it and bring it to you, that is...
Section that you read in the renewal...
Unless you say, oh, I don't, I'm on...
What did you...
No, good process, Jamie.
Nine seven eight?
What time is it?
She seeks a conditional use...
We were just...
I'll submit to the board.
And nine eight is very clear.
I'm looking at, going, he's asking for a conditional use permit, I think it's a renewal. He's asking for a conditional use process, so that he can continue to do what he has been doing. And in this case, I think it's even more egregious, because he's, he allowed the permit to expire, and then came and said, I'd like to renew it. You know?
Yeah, but we accepted it.
Yes, yes, we did.
Are we going to keep going around and around in a circle, or are we going to watch the baseball game?
Well, the question, the question now is, I think, Mr. Chairman, for you, is to decide whether we want to look at deeming this thing complete? For the submission? For the submission?
Not even a complete.
Well, I, I will move that we, that it's deemed complete. I'll second that.
A motion and a second that the applicant is complete, application is complete.
And I would question whether or not it was complete based on the fact that the permit expired, and we're not, this is not a renewal, this is a new permit, because the old permit ceased to exist the day it ran out.
Well, two weeks ago, that would have been true, but we decided, we're...
Yeah, two weeks ago, change that.
That it is renewal.
Okay.
So, my question, discussion, the question is to Ted, do we have everything that we need to know?
We have everything to meet the initial standard. The question is, do you need anything more from them that they should supply before you feel you have enough information to make a reasonable decision? Is there any more information they need to provide you before we have this public hearing? Can you make a decision to renew this?
I don't know if that's required, because the way I read it, they just have to submit all designated application, but it doesn't say...
Gentlemen, we're going to have to fly by the seat of our pants on this, I'm sorry, because in very simple terms, you're not going to find the answer on the ordinance, because the ordinance doesn't provide it. If you go Rich's direction, you can't issue a new bill, new permit for it, because it's non-conformal use in that zone. And if you say the permit's expired and they have to re-submit, they can't, because it's not permitted use in that...
But we already...
I'm not the one that was responsible. I'm not the person that was responsible for them to allowing it, allowing it to expire.
The board has already ruled on that.
Yes, right.
The board's already ruled on that, so, yeah.
And we said that we would take it under consideration. I would say that the way that it's, in my interpretation of the way that it's written, for a renewal, they need to submit the request to the town planner with all fees.
Which they don't.
Which they don't. So, on that basis, I would agree that.
Yes, we signed up that money.
Ted is the.
Because it's only in the submission requirement, they've met their submission requirement. Then, based on the sidewalk, and based on public hearing comments, then we can ask for additional things. So, I believe, I believe, I would support you.
I would, I would agree with you, Bob. I think that they, based on the fact that this board has said, yes, we're going to review it, and it's a renewal, then yes, they have met the conditions that they need to do. And I think, based on the fact that we went out and did the sidewalk, I didn't see anything that brought up any questions, in my mind, of the sidewalk. So, I would say that it would be complete, and I'm ready to make a decision on the issue. I think the board made a mistake by saying that we would review it, but that's a whole other issue.
That's hindsight.
Yes, it is.
So, let's get over it, and let's do something else.
Marty, that's what I'm saying, it's a whole other issue. I agree, this application is complete, let's move on.
Ted? Yes, since that motion failed, then you've scheduled a public hearing for the 14th, and there's nothing else to do.
Right, because we've deemed the application complete. So, that's a, that's a dead issue.
But there still is a motion to the board.
Oh, you had a motion, it's already, you went through, since a motion, a vote issue, you've already taken, and that vote to see.
I thought somebody.
That is scheduling a public hearing.
This is just that, it is.
This motion is to deem the application complete. Their submission, their submission requirement, that's all, that's all you're dealing with. Is that they met their submission requirement.
Yeah, point of order, you're worried to deem the application complete because you've scheduled a public hearing.
That's, okay, that's what I'm saying.
Okay?
I'll schedule a public hearing, but I haven't completed.
But we don't know.
I'll reset my second.
We don't, but we don't know.
Sorry, you did it.
We don't know if they need to have it, if we need to deem it complete.
No, no, because you've already, you've already deemed it complete by scheduling a public hearing.
I reset my second.
But it doesn't have to be deemed complete to schedule a public hearing.
Yes, it does.
By someone.
Yeah, by, by somebody, and that was you. You did it, Tom. You deemed it complete, and you voted for this.
Okay.
Okay, I withdraw my motion, okay? We're splitting hairs, okay?
All right. The game starts at what time? Okay, let's get on to.
Nine minutes.
Ted, you, okay, you've done my last sign, is the revision to the proposed land use of this. Do they have new forms?
Not a lot.
Yeah, still a guy. We're table.
Not a lot. You know what, we're not going to sit there and, well, what we're going to do is spread this stuff out on the table, so everybody gather around. Because it's too small for everybody to sit there from a distance and sit and understand what the time is.
But.
Only wants to see if they, you know, electronic monitors, okay? See, look, it's already happened, yeah. The cameras. Okay. Well, maybe we should just put it right up in front, and I'm afraid of the camera for the folks continuing at home, are going to have to come in.
Have you, have I invited?
There are always invite, it's up to me. You could hold it up close to the camera. This is the. I could. Make for something.
Take a shot there.
Yeah.
I hate this thing, I hate this thing, I hate this thing.
You hate that thing, Dave?
Show them some love, boy.
You know, I gotta be like. Think you want to get home to watch a game.
I don't know, is that a motion? Is that a motion, Tom?
Is that a motion?
No, I'm asking you, is that a motion?
Favor of it.
No, Tom, I'm asking you, is that a motion?
No, go ahead. Sounds more like emotion.
Well, you're not going to win this game.
Of course they are, they're going to win the next three.
I don't know about that.
You've got a lot of confidence there.
No, 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 you got to keep it exciting.
Wait, they're going to sweep them all the same way they swept them the last time. They quit that. Tom's playing. Good game.
Okay, did they win last night?
Actually, Tom is taking.
Maybe Ted wants to go home and watch the game, too.
I couldn't care less, I just assumed a.
A catch-up six in a row.
He's a Yankees fan.
One throw to the mound, the pitcher runs over the mound, the most likely runs up, but we're looking at the.
The lights.
Yeah, I'm a Yankee.
Why are you pulling?
I'm a home.
There are only two of them. You still have the three students. Yeah, I'm a Yankees fan.
Last one on top of the herd.
You don't have to pray about it.
People get that idea a lot.
No, I can't get that deal, you can't pray about it, because I'm sorry.
Andy likes the.
I mean, from the city of life. Even my brother. From the darkness, like that you come from, I'm sorry.
Even my brother has decided he wants to root for the Red Sox this year. After 46 years, he grew for the Yankees, he came over to the.
Because Ted said, because he doesn't realize that there are some years that are probably years we're going to lose. All right, gentlemen, let's go over this real quick, Marty, everybody should scrunch in. Let's scrunch in, okay? You know, you guys asked me to come up with a, with a different way of doing this, and what it really boils down to, here's a different way. There's not a lot of different ways of doing this. And we had agreed, if you remember, down here is the, what we had last time, this is what we have this time. There's not a lot of difference between, there are not that many routes in and out along through here. If we abandon what was A over here, which came in up Strickland Drive, because we were concerned that that wasn't doing much, we really are not going to have anything connected on the west side. The only thing we really do have is the A2, which is that one piece of property, the Hopkins property. And that's about the only thing. Then we have the A1 down here, which has some feasibility, and that hugs along the existing back of existing properties, and opens up this entire area down here. Doesn't do a lot for these properties, this one, this one does have some opportunity. But, frankly speaking, it would be much better if it could go out into A1 and you could double load it. But this does allow this portion of the property to be, to be developed. B1, well, you know, we got some real problems with B1. Now, B1's great, if you remember, B1, or B, went all the way through over to Belton, it's right over here. Went through the Hemlock campground.
Threw it around it.
Right, through it, went through the back end, the back end, it's expansionary, what do you call it? It's expansionary.
Campsite.
But through the campground property, per se. And there was a lot of concern, I remember Bob being especially concerned, that the idea of having the road along these smaller properties here was what we were really trying to achieve. But when we actually look at it, it doesn't really work very well, and I'll tell you why. And this is where, now you guys got a question, is you really examine this map? Oh, maybe we could help it, though, in this. Again, north is the top. If you really start looking at the map in here, this is the area that we were talking about running the road along the back of all the properties. Well, there's no reason to run it in this section here, because this is Weir's and Orlando Ford, and they've already, that's pretty much committed. So, we're talking about the back of these properties right here. Well, you know, in fact, this doesn't even show the department, this is the top one. Yeah.
And that was a strong soldier, didn't fall.
Now, I'll put this right here for you. The real problem that we run into is we have some real. Probably look at, everybody just kind of gather around a little bit here. But we have some real, real constraints. This area in here. Lots back here, we've got some pretty deep sway-ups, as you can see. See the topography in here? This is the town property, this is the property that the town will probably sell. Only because it's just, it's not going to be suitable for our purposes.
You want, question, Ted, only thought, okay? We want businesses to come here, okay? But the town doesn't feel that they're worthy enough to turn it out and to, like, somebody, only want somebody else to develop it, and they can't turn out, put any infrastructure in to encourage it?
The SLUTN decided that this site was not suitable for the town hall. That the cost of doing it, and what they felt, or what the, what the taxpayers would pay for a town hall, that the site development cost would be too high for the use. That doesn't mean a higher and better use, in which could be, could be found, in which the infrastructure improvements could be justified. But for a, for a small town hall, to make the kind of site improvements you need to make, in order to make the site work for a small town hall, and recreational fields, this is an suitable site. And that's what the SLUTN determines after meeting, I think you all heard about it, or at least you read about it in newspapers.
Is that a fact?
Yeah, well, it's based on, one of the SLUTN basically gave a price, called on how much it's going to cost just to get the driveway. It's going to be a quarter of a million dollars just to get the drive. You think that's kind of absurd, that we should look at other options? So, there is some topographic problems there, and quite frankly, I'm not sure what you gain by putting a road right here. The houses, I mean, the existing built structures that are there now, some of which are very good, like W. Cushing, we all remember W. Cushing. They're pretty close to the edge of that, so putting a road there is not really going to benefit them very much. Well, if we're going to have a road going there, as we talked before, we need to make it double loaded. We need to have opportunities on both sides of that road. So, ramming it up against these existing small units right here isn't really going to work. And besides, you know, it would have to be a horseshoe shape, because this is all Weir's here. You can see how far back that extends. And so, and frankly speaking, there's a lot of sway up here, you can see the sway up system in here. It's kind of tough, in this part right here. That doesn't mean it can't be double loaded, but I'm not sure what benefit of putting the road in here. It's much better to pull the road out this direction, here, make the string crossing right about here, and then make this one lot, or one big lot, that could be used for a combination. But then again, quite frankly, ladies and gentlemen, and there's only gentlemen here, sorry. You know, this lot is bisected by that stream, and that's a significant, that's a significant problem. So, it would appear, given those constraints, that we better pull the road out this far, this far. Our line goes out right like this, we put our road right up against this other road here, I think, doesn't open up the potential of developing these areas. And as you can see, we have some really nice plateaus in various places here. Yeah, we have streams, but we also have some nice plateaus in between. So, this is actually a watershed break, Route 1 in this area is in fact a watershed break, in this area. So, that means water flows this way to the river, and this way towards, you know, port. Or down towards the border, actually, and takes security this route, and down the river this way. So, this is pretty much a break. So, when we started looking at what Bob had suggested, which was a great suggestion, that we ran this, get this closer to the existing structures, I'm not sure it's going to pay off for us. So, we have to push it out a little farther, into the undeveloped lands, which is kind of what we wanted to do, we wanted to fuel some ideas. And if you remember at the last meeting, you know, we saw Bentley Warren get very jazzed up about the prospect of, well, not jazzed up, but at least he was considering an alternative for his land besides the campground section. Because he saw that there was potential, if that road went into his campground, that he could in fact, you know, realize some benefit.
He has the equipment, too.
So, given those kind of constraints, I actually have proposed not pulling it along these edges anymore. I also have a bit of a right-of-way problem here, where I have existing telephone lines. This is a telephone right away through here. That can be changed, but I'm not sure what we're gaining by putting it through here, because this is Weir's right here. It's developed land. This is already developed. Putting the road in through here?
Is that there existing road there now?
No, this is a, this is.
That wasn't at Bergeron Drive?
Uh, no, that, no, that is not Bergeron Drive. That is, that's just, basically, right now, what's in there is a telephone pole line.
Where?
Yep, there's a telephone pole line, you can see on the aerial.
Let's see.
And then, then basically, if we came in this way, again, we're only, we're only benefiting this, and benefiting this. And the objective would be to get this, this, these locks, this back portion here, that's where you're really going to get some of your, some of your road out to. And I have this as a cul-de-sac. Obviously, it can continue through, let's say, if Bentley Warren were interested in that, obviously, it could continue through here. This is a Vernal Pool, so I kind of bend it around, I gave it 250, actually, 400 foot set back, just in case, because it is in fact a Vernal Pool. I could jam, we could jam it up in between here, we've got the cell tower right there. I think the point being that, I'm not sure we can set an exact right-of-way. There's a lot of unknowns, there's a lot of unknowns in here. We can have suggested ones, and we can play around, we can put different ones in at all times, but I'm not sure we can set it. I'm not feeling really comfortable with not doing a complete build-out design for this entire area. Which I, no. Still be money involved, sure. When Rick did that, that expense, he did that quick estimate, he was going from here to here, the distance. That's why he did that quick expense. It was assuming, I think it was assuming a $400 a foot, or something like that.
Should he estimate that?
It was a many, it was a many options. For a road all the way through.
I was just asking, I didn't know about where.
How much was the price for the driveway into the town land, sort of a million? And that would only be a million for that whole mile and a half?
Well, you're going right up a sway. You're filling that whole sway. I think, I think expenses would be over a million if you did a full, what, mile and a half to here.
It's very much pushing.
Well, by the time you do, by the time we do these loops, it's going to be right back to.
I don't know much.
Cushing is, Cushing is, that's Weir's.
No, Cushing is.
No, it is. You have Cushing, and then you have, yeah, Cushing is right.
No.
Cushing is. Next to Route 1 carpet.
Yes, there, Cushing might be this one here. No.
That's why I'm asking.
I don't know, Marty, but I. This is Cushing right there.
And that is Bergeron Drive, that I just turned out and said. Well, you said to turn out there is a telephone right away through there.
Yeah, but its telephone pulls in there.
But there's here, there's hope.
Yeah, this telephone pulls way in there.
We got that part right.
That's a right-of-way, they're going to use Weir's Motors.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so there's no sense in including a road, even Weir's Motors. This does not make sense. This makes much more sense. And this is a couple, this is the one that's going to cost a lot of money to come in here. Now, another option would be what I call B3 here, which is swing in through here. We have a high point in through here, which you could swing in.
And what property is that?
I don't know. I'm just basing on, I'm not basing on who owns it.
I know, I tried to put it along in perspective, along Route 1.
I think it's, this is Palmon's right here, I believe. The big one's Palmon's.
Yeah, B4 is adjacent to Palmon, I think.
Yeah. That, this one is Palmon's, right there. Yep, that's Palmon's right there. So, it's right next to Palmon's, that area is open down there, and there is, there's no structures in through there. So, this is Palmon's, and the apartment here, this is the, what is that? I can't remember what that is.
Next to Palmon's, next to Palmon's was supposedly where the town was, and then you have Doustich.
Which property is which?
Yeah, no, it gets a bearing mark somewhere.
I think it's conceptual, though. You're going very conceptual. This is the entrance into the town lane.
Right.
The reason why we're saying that is because that exists, that we know we could use, the problems in Spitz. This one is by going through, you know, right by the bottom end of Palmon's, and that is private property, of course. But it does open up these areas, it avoids, with this B3 loop here, whether we send it out further, whatever we do, or just do a T, and then send off, you know, spurs off, it doesn't matter, what it does is, it does have a loop, it is feasible, whether politically or, whether politically or logistically, it can actually happen, this can happen, this, you know, has, would have to be negotiated. However, we know we can get in here. We know we can get in here. The question is, this is the narrow point, and if you look at the map again. And if you look at the map again, I'm sorry, but, you know, we're talking about a huge area and so I can't show you every single thing in detail. If we're looking at, here we are, here's the campground. This is Hughes. So we're looking at coming down here, coming across the Drew, getting access into Drew. Now, Drew is wetback in here. Is it possible to get a road in here? I would imagine if Drew were to develop, they would in fact put a road in here. But you might actually be able to skirt this huge wetland, keep this frontage here, and come across here and provide access back here by having the road come through here. Now, if you were to continue it on, and I've got stuff up in this, right at the bottom of this wetland. But if, if these folks were amenable, let's say they wanted to change their business program, or somebody wanted to buy them out, these are very valuable, so I'm not sure anybody would buy them out for some of the use, but if they did, natural process right here at the, this is basically the narrowest to do it. So you actually want to cross in through here, still provide security for this particular area, still provide some expansion in this area. But I believe that most of their expansion is over in this area and that would bisect that. So this is the unknown we discussed last time. We don't know how we really can do that without hearing from anyone. But if they were amenable to that, or future owners were, that's, that's the way you want to come in through. Keeping this secure in one place and opening up this land into here. Which is 23 acres.
This is all post road?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That there is what?
That's Roden Drive.
That's way down towards the...
That's the farthest extension of single-family home we have in this whole area. But this shows you clearly how vacant and open this area really is.
Yeah, but what I'm just trying to see is where Run the Playhouse is.
Well, Run the Playhouse is way over here.
That's all post road.
That's right there. That's Run the Playhouse.
Oh, all post road's going this way.
This is all post road going like this, this is lumber. No, that's not lumber. Excuse me. That's not lumber. This is River Road.
River Road.
That's River Road.
And then this is Old Post over here. River Road comes down here.
Yeah, River Road.
That's it.
This is it?
Yeah.
Over the river?
That's right.
Three-Roe or Jackson Senate. Old Post makes a left just because...
Old Post and Morley do go on...
Yes, you're right, no, you're right. I'm sorry, I got lost there for a second. Yeah, this is, that's lumber right there. Is that true?
No.
It's not, this is River Road.
No, that's Senate.
That's right, that's right.
River is down the lower left corner, along the river.
River is this one down? Oh, right, I'm sorry. Wow, yeah, and you're right, that is Senate Road, that's lumber of the road. This is Old Post Road, and this is River, my mistake. Yeah, because they, River Road crosses, rarely tracks that.
So where does Run the, Run the Playhouse down with?
Off the right.
Okay, and right in front of Run the Playhouse runs Old Post.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Old Post comes in, starts over here.
Right.
Goes up through and makes a left right there.
Right.
And this is, this is...
That's true.
Yep. So there we have, we...
Where's Route One on that?
Route One's this, this small quarter right here. And as you can see, I mean, a Run the Barn Playhouse, right here, is on...
Across the street.
Well, it's on your side of the street, but Route One.
Yeah.
Yes, it's on, we're there. That's, that's it right there. That's Run the Barn Playhouse.
Right there to Route One.
This is VDIK.
Yep, the vet, the other, in, oh, the English Road.
This is the vet right there, okay? This is that historic house over there. Yeah, no, that's historic, yes. So, and this is a rather, rather wet, it's all wet. This is wet, this, these wetland maps are not as accurate in fact. I'm going out tomorrow and tromping through some of these properties here to see how bad it is. Yeah, I'm going to tell you how wet they are. Well, I know they're wet, I'm going to see how wet.
But to go to your, to go to your question, I don't know if it's a question, but where you were at. About not being able to put these exactly, it gets back to your question in your notes about how do we present, you know, I mean, each of these, unless your town is going to do some of this, I think we just have to have something available to the landowners. All of the landowners on that road will have to agree.
But it's, it's a concept that we're just proposing. They could do this, this is what we perceive as a possibility.
Any development that...
If you couldn't do development down there, we're expecting new connectivity. And this is one of the ways you might think about doing it. There might be other ways, certainly, we're willing to listen to other ways and we're going to review those other ways. But we want you to start thinking of your properties not just as one single property, but a unified group of properties that are going to benefit from each other. Because quite frankly, most of those properties are not going to be developable unless you join together. Hang individually or hang together, you know? And hanging together is, is what's going to make it impossible. And I think, I think, you know, maybe I'm overplaying it, but I think what we saw happen with Bentley when he looked at this is exactly what it's intended to do. He came here making sure we weren't going through the campground. And at the end of the conversation, he was asking, why don't we go through his campground?
Or at least to the property.
At least to the property land so he can continue it on, or dead, dead-ending, you know? Because frankly speaking, it's not just because Bentley's campground is there we're dead-ending it, it's because there's no good access point onto Long Cabin Road.
Right.
We don't want to go into Long Cabin Road because we don't want this to be a bypass. And at the same time, frankly, there's no good way to get on it. We've got a huge wetland, we've got a huge stream that's a barrier. I mean, I've got that with single-family homes, Serena. This is developed, there's no vacant properties there.
No, but where we curve into your cul-de-sac?
Yeah.
Okay, Bentley's is the property in one.
Yeah, this is, this is all Bentley's right here.
So, there's no, there is no connection to Bentley property with this proposal.
No.
And yeah, there's Bentley's and the one just south of Bentley's?
Where, this one?
No, go up, go up.
That is Bentley's.
No, no, go to your left and down one. Yep, down one.
That's right.
I'll go up a little bit.
Now, the one right above that. No, in between those two.
That's Weers.
Okay, so where Weers Motors comes to the back.
On the far.
Comes all the way back.
Yeah, Weers, this is where the town has it all the way.
Okay, so I guess here's my point. All of these other roads open up, open up a property to something.
Yep.
Okay, on both sides.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Until you get to here. This one is already opened up all the way to here, that one's already opened up to here. We know this one's already developed. Why would we do that in that original... No, no, I'm, it's a question. It just, it just seems like this one would, this would already have access to here. And instead of doing all of this, you could do this little bit.
I can put a tiny little cul-de-sac, but you're right.
Like I did before.
Like you had it before and then open up another whole big property.
My very first thought, I mean, why not just have those streets that look around the ass?
And you're right, on the other side of that, it's all pretty well-developed and they have access with the road.
They do.
So there's access there, there's access to almost all of the other smaller properties along the road. So that would open up all of them except for the one right by B2 where the end of the two is.
Yeah, these properties here...
Those are the only one, and then...
But these are residential district. Remember, this is the boundary right here. Then it, then it continues down and drops over here. But this, this is residential right here.
Do we have the map of where, where those are, the boundaries?
Yes. Some are around here. There's another, there you go. And actually, I think we dropped this down more, we dropped this down like this.
When did we do that?
A long time ago. You probably need to re, I need to redo this map because I don't think I amended it since we did that. Because we were, we were letting ourselves be driven by these property owners here. But then when we actually look at the, at the maps and we see where the development really is, you can, you can take a pen right now and if you look at this map here. And with a pen right now, you look at the development through here. These two here are already developed, that's why we didn't include these two. You asked that question, that's Lobster, that's, uh, no, Lobster, that's, I mean, Rock Hill Drive. Those two are residential now, but residential properties. So if you look at this, you see the line, if we look at what we've got here, this is what we've got, we've got properties through here that are immense pieces of land that frankly, this one's heavily unlocked. It has no access.
There is, that's owned by one of the Jew families in there.
Terrific, it has no legal access. It might have a right-of-way, but it doesn't have a, it doesn't, it may have an easement, but it doesn't have a right-of-way.
Long Island, that's what it is, it's kind of, it does not have definition of width and anything else.
So it's an easement, they don't have a right-of-way. So that's a problem piece right there. If the Jews own it, that's a problem piece.
Drew's running all the way up to and behind Bobby Taylor's, okay?
All of these are problem pieces. This one's a problem piece because you have to actually go through these yards in order to build a road to get into the back land. Even Bentley's is a problem. Bentley's, this portion's a problem piece.
Well, Bentley comes from Old Post Road directly...
But if he wanted...
Two Route One.
Yeah, but if, no, but he couldn't, if he wanted, if he does, if you don't, he could not make the connection between these two by what we're trying to achieve to prevent run-throughs, you know, any kind of run-through between these two roads through his property, which is not something he wants to do any, he wants to give some separation or anyhow. But, I mean, we have, we have large tricep property that really don't have any really good legal access. They do, but the only problem is that, again, we have this wetland on the frontage.
By showing, you know, I, I heard Bentley's that now.
Yeah.
The, by showing people these potentials, though it's only potential if they can get everybody to the left and to the right and to the north and to the south and rematch.
Right.
Get it all the way out to, to wherever, be it in Eastman or a right-of-way or...
Sorry.
Or whatever. So...
Well, what I'm saying is that if they want to do something with their property, they may not want to, but if they want to do something with their property, in some cases, they can't do anything with the property.
But they might not be able to if anyone along that lane says no, right?
No, not necessarily.
You take one in the middle, I mean, they'd obviously do the road or whatever on their property, but sure can't be directed to do it on other people.
No, but if this property owner, let's say, Hemlock decides they're going to make a deal with this, these guys define their back portion, and these guys define their back portion, they assemble lots. This certainly does, that makes it work. If you were going to do some significant development, if you were going to do a business park out here, you're going to assemble lots. You're not going to do it on individual lots here because there's nothing here in the back land that's really suitable, because there's no great access. The only access is Bergeron Drive, as Marty says, but, you know, you're going to have to negotiate that. You got that access and you got that access. The existing accesses you've got are Bergeron Drive, the town, and Hughes. All the other ones you're going to have to pump through existing properties.
How many of the property owners have, have we spoken with?
I've talked to one, two, I've talked to two.
I'm afraid it might come across as the town is looking to play with my land. And I think, I'm getting kind of, and you can feel it about just, just more when they look like we're grabbing land back there that maybe they wouldn't want. I'm thinking from Hemlock, if I owned that Hemlock campground, I would resist it because he's invested so much in having a wooded, pristine area.
Yep, and I think we recognize that, that would probably be a thing, that's why we changed the map. So we recognize that. Do we need to talk to the individual homeowners? Yes. The individual property owners? Yes, in fact, it's already been mandated by the Complain Committee. This is M2, by the way, in their plan. M2 is mandated, the staff and the planning board, they're recommending, strongly recommending that, that no ordinances be written regarding this issue without their, their advisement, as it should be in any kind of situation like this.
Another, another thing that seems to me like we've, we've lost the intent of those roads in the first place. I think the important development is right along with mine. In back would be nice, but we don't even know if they will be developed, I think.
No, but you're planning for the future. You're planning 20 years out.
But I don't want to do, do that while ignoring the, that, with the road, the frontage right on.
The interconnected.
You think you have, I mean, you spent six months on the DB1 district.
But we threw it all away, that, that access with all those businesses along the line to be interconnected.
No, we didn't, how do we throw that away?
Where is the road behind?
Doesn't have to necessarily be road, remember, it's, it's connectivity between parking lots and in some, and where appropriate roads. We're not, we're not going to, we, I cannot right now, without knowing what everybody's planning here is, or else, without playing SimCity and master planning how this, this whole area should be developed, I can't tell you exactly how this should be developed. And I'm not prepared to tell all these landowners this is exactly where the road's going to go. Because they're, what they want to do with their property, or their future assigns are going to want to do with that property, is going to be market-driven by whatever works at that time. Pratt &amp; Whitney wants to do a facility out here, that's a mar, that's a game changer.
But I think to Tom's point, putting the road on the map and showing people, this is a potential. They're not going to see, this might be where the road is going to be. They're going to see, this is where they want to put the road. And that would be a game changer. I think, just saying to them, you know, this is what we're planning to do and you have the potential to eventually have somebody come along and want to connect all of them together, at which point they'll have to figure out where the road's going to go. But for us, I think, I think Tom's right, if you put it on the map, they're going to assume that we're trying to take their land because we want to put a road in that exact spot. Because they're not going to conceptualize it.
I've, I've got a suggestion, man. Why don't we sit them down, the seven of them, there's only about seven or eight of them there that are, that are property owners. Why don't we sit them down and give them, tell them that's where they want to put their road?
If they want it.
If they want, well, you know, if they want it, but, you know, at the same time, remember, land changes, you know, you, unless you're going to put your land in with a nature conservancy or with a land trust.
Then they sell it anymore.
Or sell trust, or, or, or sell the development rights on it. What happens is assigns, heirs sell property. Otherwise, Run the wouldn't look like it does now. They do sell property and it happens within the last generation. But the vote is now, you know, it, it has to pass by popular vote.
I agree, and that's why it's absolutely critical to sit down with these folks and say, gee, this is where I think we need to go.
I want to make sure that, that they're all in it.
Yeah, I agree, and I think the next step would not be to do anything on this until you sit down with them. Around a round table, they all have maps, and say, let's talk about this.
Okay, one question. That's all fine and dandy, okay, for what you want to think about the future. But what are you doing for just people to know? Everybody says you want to turn out and see what it's going to be, but what about Route One? It's like Tom was just saying, I said, what are you turning out doing for Route One now?
Well, I thought that's what we said, that's the DB1.
Yeah, a lot of people.
Oh, well, we, like I said, you've been in talk, we've been in talks for years and nothing's been done.
So what do you want to be done, Marty?
And we should have the town recognize that the, that it is a business district instead of turning out having it as a black hole.
I don't understand what you mean by a business district, Marty. It's zoned a business district.
Zoned, but guess what?
But what?
It's still a black hole.
It has businesses in it. I don't know what else, what else you can do. It has existing businesses, it's zoned for businesses.
Why do you drive for more businesses than it's zoned for now? Why do you drive down it tonight?
Are you talking about lighting again?
Yeah.
You know, I can, okay, I can mandate, I can mandate that every single one of these... I can mandate that every single one of these property owners put a light on their property. I can do that.
Okay, do it then.
Do you want to do that?
No, but guess what, because, because we get nothing else, you don't turn on, there is nothing there for incentive.
Okay, we're getting away from the issue of the circulation.
Well, circulation, but turn on, you got Route 1 is supposed to be your circulation, and then you want to turn on something on a dream coming off the side. But why don't you do something, turn on at least, for what you have?
Well, let's do that at another meeting. Right now, we've, we've got to focus our discussion on, do we want to propose a conceptual idea for a circulation road? And have a, have a meeting with the, with the business owners. The property owners, sorry.
I, I don't think we have any choice but to be with the property owners, we say to them, we, we are, we are thinking of this, what do you guys think, and if this is gonna happen, you know? Because if, if they don't want it to happen, it won't make any difference.
I'm this smiley here.
Right? If, 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 if we don't get that behind us, it won't happen.
And if there's only seven property owners, it's a bad idea.
Well, I think you're gonna find that they're going to at first be, and I, I'm just, you know, I'm making assumptions, but I talked to two. And they start getting excited about it. First, they're resistant, what are you trying, what are you up to?
Right, I think you're right.
Has anybody would say, has anybody would say, what are you guys, what are you doing now, what are you trying to?
Which you're right, it's gonna make that property a lot more attractive if there's some way to get to it.
If it was attractive, somebody, if it was attractive, now it would be developed.
Yeah.
It's not, there's some huge impediments to doing anything back there. So a lot of it's psych constraints, and this is nothing compared to this. You know? So, um, so yeah, we have, I think there's, there's seven or eight, I counted them up. I promised the Complain Committee that this board would facilitate that, I think the Complain Committee might be able to, to play too, but I really think it's this board. This board understands the nuts and bolts more of, 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 of road construction and implications of connections. Nothing against the Complain Committee, but they certainly, I'm sure they will participate as well, but they had strongly recommended that that's what we could do.
And I think you have a great idea.
But I agree, I mean, this is gonna let it go.
Those discussions belong here, I mean, because we should be amongst the here directly from them.
Yeah, yeah. I agree. And what Marty's talking about is something the Complain Committee should be looking at.
Well, this, I think it was on the action for the selectmen in that, and all of those.
Something they're not gonna do, it's gonna, it has to be at the Complan level, it's gotta be at a level where, um, and I'm, so I'm saying this, Marty, because I want you to think, that I, I don't want you to think that this planning board doesn't understand what you're saying, because those are all elements in the success of this district. You have to have those things in the success, the only thing is, I don't want to regulate them. I don't want to regulate that the individual property owner has to go out and put a streetlight for the benefit of the town, I think the town should be doing that, yes. I think there should be sidewalks, streetlights, improvements, street trees, whatever, and it's, but it's gotta be a policy that's established by a planning group. We're writing ordinance, we can recommend that, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna regulate it, we're not gonna require them to do it, so it's not gonna be really in our backyard. It's gonna frankly be in the backyard, it's gonna be in the province of the Complan Committee and frankly, the Economic Development Committee.
Yeah, it is.
Well, I think more complan, because they're, they're giving the big image. If they're gonna do the big image here, I think they need to say, not only do we need to make this mixed use, but we need to provide the infrastructure for it to succeed. And that includes lights, sidewalks, trees,
The money's paid for.
Sewer, and, and, yeah, sewer, water, three-phase, gas if we can get it. How do we do this? Well, we're, we're so used to not succeeding that we think it's never gonna happen, well, it's coming closer than we think. It's not, it's not inconceivable to do this. And some of the mechanisms to do it, some of the, some of the mechanisms and funding mechanisms to do it are, are emerging. So it's not pie in the sky, is the point. But it's not the planning board, Marty, it's Complan and Economic Development. Now, I'm having a problem getting Economic Development to, to look at the details of something like that. So I think it's gonna have to be more complan, quite frankly. I think, I think Economic Development's be moving towards it.
Let's put it this way.
Thinking of those terms.
Let's put it this way, if you want your sidewalks, right?
Yeah.
You gotta be able to see where you go.
Yeah.
You can't even see now.
Exactly, Marty.
We haven't seen it in the last twenty-five years.
We met, remember there was the whole thing about potentially even getting money for it being a trail and a walkway and the da-da-da.
It's still there.
And, yeah, but that's where you get your money to get your money, it's Marty, I mean, you don't just pull it out and, without a plan.
Well, let's put it this way, what, businesses pay along Route 1, okay, lights can embed there a lot easier.
Well, that's a policy issue I can't speak to, and I'm not sure the board can speak to. That's a select, monetary decision, where are they gonna spend money? But, but, Marty, it's not gonna happen unless there's a policy, unless number one, there's a policy established by the town that is voted on and accepted by the voters. Without the voters saying, yes, we agree with this policy, and therefore we must implement it, it's never gonna happen. But if the voters, where, if, let's say goes with the Complan, they say, we need these things in this area in order for this to succeed. And it's backed up by the Planning Board, the EDC, and it goes to town, and they accept that, then automatically what that means is that's an implementation policy that the selectmen are gonna be responsible for implementing. Now, they may kick it over to the planning board, but they, they won't, this is a technical issue, they are responsible for it. So now they have a goal that's been approved by the voters, and now they have to implement it. It's no different when the EDC got their, uh, their market study money. Now, oh, here's your money, now go do it. It's not gonna be, anyone, anybody else's back but those guys. Now, when they take that to the voters and say, will you approve this or not, this is our concept, and these are the commitments we want to make to this, voters are gonna say yes, and you've got an implementable, uh, thing. How they fund it is another issue, but it's a policy that's gonna be implemented. But until it is in a document like that, Marty, we're spinning our wheels. So, the, the Planning Board's not the right venue, but the Comprehensive Planning Committee is. And I recommend, I think you've got, you're, you're an advocate for it, I think you're dead right on the lights and all the infrastructure, you're dead right, and it needs to be accomplished. So we're having a meeting with the Complan Committee, I believe I'm the eighth.
I don't know, nobody told us.
I just did.
Well, maybe come under plan it, is it?
Yeah, that's, that's next.
That's next, but that's, that's what we're gonna be doing. And, um, and that's where we, they want to sit down and, and talk to you folks about the five mixed-use districts that they've, they've come up with language for. And this is a chance to say, wait a second, this is banned, or we need more on this, or how about considering this? And that's where the language comes in, that's where you say, we should talk about lights, sewer, infrastructure and so forth, because right now, there's no discussion on that, it's just use. So I think it's a good opportunity to bring this subject up.
And get it into the company.
So party of planning for it is November 8th, right?
Done? Okay, good.
Well, the recommendation was that you would get,
Seven meetings.
Seven meetings. When you want to do it?
For when?
Yeah, when you want to do it?
Well, it should be,
I'll get the notes out, I'll actually,
Should be at one of our, well, should it be at the meeting that we vote, you proposed, cause he said whatever. First meeting of the month will be,
I thought the first was gonna be applications, because the second is gonna be,
You should have one application next.
For Thanksgiving.
What?
There's only one meeting in November?
No, there's two meetings.
You're gonna have three, you got through on that, and you got one with the, the seven, November the 7th. And the 14th already.
Yep.
Usually we do not have a,
We don't usually have one in the week with Thanksgiving.
No, it's Thanksgiving Day that would be our normal meeting.
Sorry, I can't make it.
I'm not available.
I can't make it, yeah.
Trip to Fane Turkey will kick in at that one.
So, what are we looking at, guys?
December.
Wow, so long ways out. The question is, the question, one question is, how many of these property owners are around at that time of the year? Do any of them go away? Because the simple fact is, or somebody that can speak for the property owner.
We're gonna have to take that chance.
Or either that, or invite them to the, part of the Comprehensive Plan Meeting, since,
But they would, they would have, the Comprehensive Plan would have the same issue, suppose the homeowner's not, the landlord is not gonna be available because they went to Florida for the winter. We're always gonna have somebody that's not gonna be available.
Let's get the schedule set, November 7th, what takes place?
That is a meeting that's jointed between Planning Board and the Complan Committee. I believe that's, that's the one, I will verify that, but I think that's the day.
The last week.
The 14th is our regular meeting.
14th is our regular meeting.
Public hearing for DuBois, and that's all we got. I mean, we're still, there's a lot of construction, a lot of activity occurring in the level right now, but it's all small little stuff, it's nothing that's coming to you yet.
Where's, where is, suppose the, where the sidewalks are supposed to be Saturday or whatever else, where is West Street or up, uh, Limerick Road?
West Street? Uh, West Lane is, is right by the Blueberry Farm.
But the, the first one is gonna be at the town, where the cross street to Town Garage.
Oh, you're talking, oh, you're talking about, oh, okay, you're talking about this Saturday.
Right.
Yeah, it's gonna be at, at the Town Garage, which is behind the Town Garage.
Or is it sidewalk?
This is the sidewalk for the, for the town hall. It's a super radic site.
For all terminal.
For all terminal sites. And one's right across the street from West Lane. Which is, you know where the Berry Farm is? You know where the West, yeah, yeah, okay, it's right, it's in the field across the street.
But that also too, what, is that, you were turning around coming across on, uh, Old Limerick Road, running out.
It's much farther.
I was thinking, it's much farther north.
I know, no, I was thinking turn on your back way into,
Yeah, I know what you're thinking, it's much farther up on, on, on Wednesday.
I almost did the joint,
Cross Street, Keeler's.
November 7th.
Yeah, okay, hurry to 8th, that's a Friday. No, that's a Friday, we're not doing Friday.
Great. Okay, but the sidewalks for the proposed town hall,
Is this Saturday?
Saturday, nine o'clock.
It's this Saturday. Is that gonna go out and take it out to them tomorrow?
At 7?
Is it on the old dump?
No.
The next to the towers?
It's on the Halsik property.
Huh?
The Halsik property. Not Billy's, the original Halsik.
Dad.
Half the field. And you brought up half the property. But it's, nothing on, all the frontage will be taken from.
The frontage is on what?
Not room. But the frontage for this lot will be actually, will be incorporated in the town lot, so we can, we'll be coming off Bergeron. Before we get to,
That's at nine o'clock, right?
I don't know.
Wet, they're not going to.
It should be posted on the website.
It should be posted on the website.
I think it's called Town Hall.
What is the actual address? Don't know, Halsik Property, Mountain Road. It's at the corner of Mountain and, uh, and Bergeron. On that down. It's the second property down after Bergeron.
The little house in the corner is the one, it's the field that's just, um, right down in the, My condolences.
Yeah, I took you two myself.
I couldn't rest in the, it's not fun.
Well, this time you have, good luck.
It is covered, as long as you have one of the supply storms that come out of Canada.
So the meeting with the property owners is what date?
7th.
November 7th?
Yes.
That's company as a plan, yeah.
That's the company.
Oh, oh, wait, I'm, I'm sorry. Well, why didn't you tell me?
We could, we could, if, if all we have to do on the 14th is, is the,
Public hearing.
The public hearing, we could do it that day.
Yeah, why not?
We haven't had time to notify and invite, exactly.
I think so.
Twenty seconds.
Three weeks.
It's on the 14th?
Yeah.
Their telephone number up home.
Well, no, I'm gonna probably do phone calls.
Yeah, one sec.
Okay.
Be personal.
I mean, seven or eight property meetings, it's easier to phone call.
Well, the 14th is the plan, and the other one is the company. Okay.
All right.
What about, do you want to discuss this?
Other times we've talked, what else you got?
What else do I have? Let's see, um, we approved, um, Nerdun Road, which is not gonna be renamed, Never Dunn, it's Nerdun.
Where's this?
It's off Thompson, it's the pet's property.
All right.
We approved that, that's going to be rebuilt and, plus, although it's not going to be done now, it's going to be built to a higher level, it's gonna be 80 feet wide and will be paved. It's going to be, um, there's gonna be a horse stable out there. And eventually, this is that idea we have talked about, I briefly mentioned to you. We're looking at creating a center horse stable and then building an equestrian subdivision around it. Some of the things we're looking at, discussing doing that. Well, basically would be, it's like you share stables with all of your neighbors, it's common ground, and the stables which have,
It's condominium for horses.
What?
Of horses.
But we're aiming to that point.
Yeah.
We're still looking at just a single family home, we, on, on top of a stable, that's basically gonna be a stable and, and a,
A horse stall.
Yeah, a horse stall.
It's not that big, it's small, you can, uh,
We have, we,
The horse stalls isn't big.
There's other places that have stalls under the,
Oh, yeah.
Our garage, one right there.
This, our, uh, our, uh, town council,
Yeah.
Basically has that situation in their own property. And who's got residence in those, so.
You can live in Anshville?
So, uh, that was one thing, we approved that, that went over fairly simply, and that's gonna be a way, a major improvement in that area. Uh, let's see, I, I did an inspection of champagne's today, and it's looking quite beautiful inside. Have some, some landscaping issues we're gonna deal with. But, um, otherwise, that's going great, they're gonna be looking for seals soon on that, they put their pavement down today. Yeah, I did, like, um, I don't know, do they ever get over 50? I don't think so.
Right there on the corner, Marty, with the,
Yeah, there was plenty of sun today. A little waiting. Getting the, getting the lights there without it getting too cool before you lay it down, that's the problem. Uh, let's see, so they're, they're doing well, the Complan Committee has, as I said, had a, um, has been moving on pretty, pretty quickly, they've been, they've basically been approving what you folks have been doing. They have one, um, one issue that they are very adamant about, and that is the prohibition on residential units without a business use attached to it. Um, they, they believe that, they have concluded that, they're advising, that the, um, that there be an exemption that allows any property owner to have a minimum of just one single-family home on a property in the event that somebody bought that property along Route 1 to build their dream house up. They, but they're, they're, they're saying there was a prohibition on single-family subdivisions in there.
Wait a minute, I got a good one on that one, okay? If you have a business, if you live there most of the time, it's your house anyway. It's like most, most private owner businesses are there.
I'm not hurt over them, man.
You make sure you bring that up on the Saturday, but that, that's,
I'm not bad for one.
They're, they're, they're very adamant about that, probably it's gonna be more geared towards more, more towards D2. Because, you know, that's the big, I know, they're the one behind, very undeveloped areas. And they're concerned that somebody has property on there, they've been hoping to retire on and put their, their dream single-family home on.
Well, none of them are on Route 1. They all live right there.
They're all behind.
That's the recommendation of the Complan Committee.
Yeah, but I said, the Comprehensive Committee, none of them live on Route 1.
No, and certainly that'd be something that, that could be discussed at the, at the meeting, and, you know, certainly, you know, they're gonna be very open to be talking to the planning board, the idea is to exchange ideas at this meeting. Um, and to, I, I expect it to be very productive in that both, both boards will, will help each other out in, in fleshing out what the, what the concepts are. I think they've been very diligent in their work, but, and I'm actually pleased with their progress thus far. We probably do need to flesh out more things, we do have one issue that, um, will be discussed this coming Tuesday, uh, which, um, is gonna be interesting. It's, it's breaching a subject that we, um, we have not breached yet, although we danced around and talked about it. And that is the whole issue of the Route 111 corridor. They have agreed that what we call the CCN district will be extended down to the townhomes. They have agreed that what we call the CCN district would be extended down to the power lines.
Where it was originally planned?
I don't know about originally, I just know.
That's where it was originally planned.
They've agreed to take it down.
We already had businesses pass.
Well, that's what they agreed to, and then the summit came up of what to do with the Route One quarter. There is a contingent within the Complan Committee that believes that all or portions of the Route One eleven quarter result for, for commercial, or mixed use, but allow commercial uses along it. And the debate and the argument that they're gonna have to work on on Tuesday is trying to determine, you know, this is aside from what the wishes of the property owners are. There are large property owners representative, who of course can make the decision like every, any property owner, I'm not gonna build, I'm not gonna build. Unless they put it into a trust of some sort, you know, um, that may change, depending on who the assign is in, in the future or. But, um, the interesting thing is that what is gonna be defining what is, what's appropriate and what isn't. What is rural character and what isn't? What, when people in the town always keep talking about preserving the rural character, what are they thinking? Does that have a location? Is, is that the corner everybody assumes is what they're talking about? Or is it somewhere else? Or is it just a general lack of density? And, and, uh, we're gonna be exploring ways to settle that question, because everybody assumes that it's that corner, may not be that corner.
Yeah, see, I don't think it's that corner.
You live there. I live there.
Nothing, nothing, nothing rural about waiting ten minutes to get out of your driveway.
Yeah, it's a good day.
Just turn and go the other way.
That's right.
I've done it. Well, here's the news, guys. I mean, the DOT is considering putting a light on Hill Street, Hill Road.
I thought, really? When they were here two years ago, they said no.
Said no.
Not a thing.
Well, the reason why they are is they're just, the, Hill Street is the most, Hill Road is the most, uh, dangerous intersection in York County. It has, well, let me rephrase it, is the highest number of accidents with meanings and serious injuries in York County. It's not the deadliest intersection, that's actually two oh two in Waterbury. But that is the most accident prone with serious injuries, um, intersection in York County.
Well, good, then, well, did they find that they paid attention?
Well, the problem is they have turning lanes, and as you know, they recently had a T bone out there. Um, and, uh, I'm not sure the turning lane would have, the turning lane wouldn't have helped that at all. The turning lane does not address the issue of left-turning traffic in Long River. In the beginning, I wondered that. It's starting to look like it's going to meet, um, the level of service warrants.
Good.
Jamie knows about that. A level of service warrant is a criteria in which an intersection is, is failing, either from a safety or a performance.
That gives us a break, John, in being able to get out, because the traffic has to stop for a little bit, then we have hopefully moving to get out.
Stop going more direction.
Which way you guys are gonna control the light switch?
Yeah, but the problem is, it's not gonna be coordinated, so.
Yeah, there is.
When this lane is full, that lane is empty, and when that lane is full, this lane is empty.
It's gotta, it's gotta go.
But just like the realignment and the marrying of old Alfred Road and New Road, which keeps, getting pushed back, I don't think I hold my breath over, over a symbolized whole of intimacy.
That's typical.
It's gonna have to go through.
The only, the only thing will happen on that is unless, turn on, you have, Bitterford does something with the a racino or casino or racetrack or anything else down there, because then that will increase the traffic so much.
I heard, I heard today, they may never get, get what they're looking for. The Pirates are looking to go to Softwood. They're looking at property out of Long Road in Softwood.
Yeah, they're looking.
Our summer's whole place.
Instead of Bitterford.
What else you got to add?
Uh, that is, uh, that's it. I have a couple of more, uh, I have a couple more private way exemptions that are coming up. I don't have any big projects coming down the Pice, we're basing, sorry. No subdivisions, uh, no businesses. That's not good.
I heard something. Any other comments from the board members?
Anything?
Anything else to add?
Move to the third.
Second?
All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. By the way, Sinead P's almost done. Yes. They got another, they've done this already, but they got another year and a half before they can.
Yes.